Awesome. Alright, so we'll start the February tenth Bend Planning Commission meeting. Start off with a roll call. So we don't have any commissioners or is Bob online?
I think he is.
Bob should be online.
Bob, are you?
I am online. Thank you.
Alright, and we'll do roll call. Sergeant John.
John Lamont here.
Suzanne Johansson.
Scott Winters.
Nathan Nelson.
Aaron Ludden.
Okay, so we'll move on to the agenda number one, visitors section. So if there's any visitors that wish to address the planning commission on anything other than what's on the agenda this evening, now would be the time to either, we have one, but I think is this for? We have one person speaking, but I believe that's for the project. Yeah, the laws. And then.
Is there anybody in the room who didn't fill out a speaker slip who wanted to speak during the visitor section? So for not the waterway overlay zone application that's on the agenda, but another matter?
Okay. So we can move on then to the quasi judicial public hearing. PLW O Z two zero two four zero seven zero nine. Waterway overlay zone application for a new single unit detached dwelling in residential standard density zone at two oh four nine Northwest Lakeside Place.
You gotta go through some procedure last time.
Oh, sorry. I've got my volume on here. Um, okay, so we'll open the hearing and first we'll begin with a statement of pre-hearing contacts, bias, prejudice, or personal interests. But we'll go down line, starting with Bob.
Uh, no conflicts or contact.
Uh, no conflicts or contacts.
None for me.
None for me?
None.
None.
Alright, and then we'll take a second to if there's any challenge for bias present. Prejudgment or personal interest?
And that's the time if there's anyone in the room who wants to challenge with the commissioners just stated in terms of having any pre-hearing contacts, you would raise that now. I'm not seeing any.
Uh, so then staff will now explain the procedural requirements of state law.
Okay, so I just need to read a little script essentially, just to make sure we cover all the procedural aspects of a quasi judicial public hearing. So unless an objection, the city will rely on the mail notice and staff report as well as staff's oral presentation tonight to list the applicable substantive criteria for this project. All testimony, argument, and evidence must be directed to these criteria or other comprehensive plan or development code criteria that you believe are applicable. The failure to address an issue with sufficient specificity for the planning commission to understand and resolve the issue in its decision and to afford other parties an opportunity to respond may preclude an appeal on that issue to the land use board of appeals. The failure of the applicant to raise a constitutional or other issue concerning a proposed condition of approval with sufficient specificity for the commission to respond to the issue in its decision and to afford other parties an opportunity to respond may preclude a future civil action for damages concerning that condition in circuit court. So thank you for that.
Alright, and now we'll move on to the staff report.
Good evening. My name's Alexa Repko. I'm an associate planner in the current planning division. Um, and tonight I will be presenting my staff recommendation for application PLW O Z two zero two four zero seven zero nine. A waterway overlay zone review to construct a two thousand six or two thousand and sixty-three square foot, two-story, single-unit detached dwelling and a seven hundred and eighteen square foot attached garage in the sink or residential standard density zone. So the subject property is located at twenty forty-nine Northwest Lakeside Place, which is further identified as tax lot eleven hundred on Deschutes County Assessor's map. Seventeen twelve, um, twenty-nine D B. It is within the residential standard density zone and waterway overlay zone. The property is ten thousand four hundred and seven square feet in size and located on the east side of the Deschutes River. It is currently undeveloped. The applicant proposes to construct a two thousand and sixty-three square foot, two-story, single-unit detached dwelling and a seven hundred and eighteen square foot attached garage. So here you can see the frontage of the subject property along North Northwest Lakeside Place and the rear of the property facing the Deschutes River. The subject property is located within the Deschutes River corridor design review combining zone, but it is outside of the Riparian corridor in the floodplain. As you can see here, it would be kind of hard to talk because the colors are similar, but. Um, here's the site plan, including the attack or the single unit detached dwelling, attached garage and covered patio. And then I have highlighted here the hundred foot offset from the ordinary high watermark. So chapter two point one and three point five of the bend development code are applicable to this application. Single unit detached dwellings are permitted outright in the R S zone and the development standards of chapter two point one, including, um, I think it went, there we go. Including the required setbacks, maximum lot coverage and building height have all been met. And the other design standards of three point five, including lighting and onsite drainage have also been met. The section two point seven point six ten D of the bend development code reviews um, gray removal within the laws. The submitted landscape plan shows two trees on site that are greater than four inch D B H or diameter at breast height. Um, and they're both proposed to remain. Only one existing tree is proposed to be removed, but it's three inches at uh, three inch D B H. Um, and it's a deciduous tree located on the west side of the proposed dwelling. Um, but a standard condition of approval will be imposed to protect the existing trees to remain. The subject site is located within the area listed in B D C two point seven point six fifty E one A I I here, um, which is the east bank from the southern property line of McGill's Landing subdivision to the northern property line of the Ben Riverside Motel. Therefore, the required, um, building setback from the ordinary high watermark for this site is a hundred feet. Um, so some more standards in B D C two point seven point six fifty here. Um, the applicant proposes to retain all existing significant trees located within the Riparian corridor. Um, the proposed two-story, single-unit detached dwelling with an attached garage and covered patio is compatible with the covered, um, with the surrounding area. And the proposed colors are muted and the materials are non-reflective. So these these standards have also been met. Um, some more standards in B D C two point seven point six fifty. Um, as was previously discussed, a hundred foot setback is required. Um, the proposed covered patio encroaches into the hundred foot setback by about five feet. So, um, the planning commission can approve um, a lesser setback of ninety-five feet. Um, they, with that being said, if if the planning commission does approve a lesser setback, they can also impose um, or require a public access to the river um, or additional and or additional landscaping. But I did want to note here that Ben Parks and Rec does own a strip of land between the river and the subject property that's about twenty feet wide. So there is some public access there. Um, here you can see the east and south elevations of the proposed two-story, single-unit detached dwelling. Um, and the materials, including board and bat and siding, cedar trim and stone veneer, which is all compatible with the area. Um, and then here you can see west and north elevations as well as some proposed paint colors, which include Sherwin-Williams Porpoise and a new gray, which are both muted or tones. Um, staff recommends that the planning commission approve this waterway overlay zone application subject to four conditions of approval, all of which are standard in nature. And I do just want to note that staff is asking the planning commission to omit previously included um, condition of approval number five, which was requesting further information on proposed paint colors because the applicant has provided those. But I have that here in the motion to omit condition of approval of number five. And that's all I have. If you guys have any questions, let me know.
Yeah, just one quick one. Uh, there is a separate unit, I think, on its side doors. Is that correct? Where it's not part of the house?
This site is undeveloped.
No, no, I mean in the new, in the new, uh.
This is for a single unit detached dwelling with an attached garage and a covered patio.
Hey, you were a separate unit inside. I thought that was a discussion. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I just had one question about the eaves encroaching in the five-foot setback.
In the side yard.
On the side yard. The properties seem like they're pretty close, so um, thinking about snow slipping off a roof.
Right.
Uh, I mean, I guess there's a fence, so but it's gonna potentially impact the fence. I just wondered, that's okay, like.
So eaves are allowed to encroach into side setbacks by, I think, two or three feet.
Two feet is what we like proposed. I just, um, is that, I mean, I don't know. My neighbor has that and the snow piles up against my house.
Right. We also addressed onsite drainage in three point five, um, and it seemed to have met, but we could um, I could look into it further if you want.
That was my only question, just because things are getting closer and closer together.
I will note that we see that throughout town, um, where they're hitting the minimum setback, which is five feet. So you get five feet on each side. And then you get a two-foot projection into the eve and then they, so that still allows for six feet of separation, which meets the building code. Separation for fire. So it's, it's everywhere.
Okay.
Yeah, my neighbors and I, one time during snowmageddon.
During snowmageddon, yeah, exactly. It's just completely full. It's like, oh, okay. I don't, my roof doesn't slope that way, just theirs. So when it's up against my windows, like, hmm.
It's like Timberline Lodge.
Well, yes, but I don't live in Timberline in the lodge. Okay, sorry. That was, that was my only question. Thanks.
Uh, any other questions for staff? Bob?
Well, I guess I'll, I'll ask, uh, because so they're asking for team approach on them. They have a shorter than normal setback. Is there a particular justification why they need that?
So, um, I will say that the hundred foot setback is a bit abnormal. It's just because they, um, are within the area listed in that section and I can pull it back up here. Um, so typically the setback would be much less. Um, so I think a five-foot encroachment is I mean, it's totally up to you guys, but is reasonable. Um, and it is just that covered patio that's encroaching. Um.
It is, um, so the the standard for the code is a, is a minimum hundred foot setback and the planning commission has ability to approve anything up to within forty feet of the ordinary high watermark, which is pretty standard, but down the river, the planning commission has, um, done that, although on a case-by-case basis and and considering whether or not there should be any additional architectural features or screening or sensitivity to the corridor. So those are all things you could take into consideration. Also proximity to a public access to the river, which as Alexa mentioned, there is an intervening parcel of land that B P R D owns. Um, whether or not that's currently developed with public access, there is an ability for that to exist in the future.
Okay. Um, but the purpose of that hundred foot setback is for, from the high watermark? Is that, that's for flood?
This is for design review. So as Alexa mentioned, this property where they're developing is outside of the floodplain and outside of the Riparian corridor. If it were inside one of those overlay subzones, she would have gone through many more approval criteria that this project would need to meet. So it's strictly design review at this point, that that stretch that's that extends to a hundred foot setback from the ordinary high watermark is really more about um, the visual aspects of the project and compatibility and sensitivity to the river in that way.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. I believe a lot of the ones that are a little bit south of here, they all are within the one hundred foot. Just looking.
You're looking at.
Looking at, and I, and I.
Oh, you pulled it up on like Google Earth?
Yeah, yeah.
I can't see it. Thanks.
And I think that that, um, was a part of my findings in the staff report as well, that it's compatible with the area.
I did see, I did know that, yeah. Okay.
There's no public access through this property now. Is that correct?
Right.
There's not a trail or anything or user trail.
Okay, maybe that's a question for the applicant.
Okay.
Uh, any more questions for staff? Well, then we can move on to the, is the applicant have a presentation or wish to speak?
Yep. Which places?
Oh.
Do you mind going to the table just so it works with our camera views for online viewing and technology?
I'm John Jordan. I'm, uh, the designer that drew the plans. A good late afternoon, or is it evening? Uh, esteemed City of Ben Planning Commission. Um, when I was approached as a possible designer for the house at two zero four nine Lakeside Place for Chad and Sonny Trot, I visited the site and was pleasantly surprised to find a build-ready lot. Um, this was due to the previously installed utilities and stub outs. Existing sidewalks and already built driveway apron. There were no mature trees or vegetation to be removed. And there would not be a need for a complex excavation in proximity to the river. The impact to the, uh, Deschutes River would be minimal due to the elevated nature of the site. Uh, after obtaining a survey and performing some research and due diligence, it was found that no wetlands existed on site. It was also discovered that the ordinary high watermark encroached closer than that of the neighboring properties, most of which were not eligible for a laws review. The additional encroachment of the ordinary high watermark is due to the fact that there is a peninsula and cove-like feature at the riverbank. This was uncovered by the survey. Uh, if we want to backtrack a little bit, maybe Alexa could help us and we could take a look at the site plan. You can see that the contours farther away from the bank are higher than the, the contours at the bank, which proves the point. Um, after diving into the big picture portion of the design work, we learned that instead of conforming to the, uh, one hundred foot setback from the river, we really needed to encroach a few feet closer to take advantage of the view, the river views similar to that of the neighboring homes. Uh, in considerations for the site and the river, we attempted to be respectful of the neighboring properties by going no closer to the rim rock and also by not proposing to be closer than the imaginary line drawn between the neighboring house to the north and the south. We have also selected mostly natural wood and stone materials of muted natural tones in the interest of blending with the natural environment. No bright or reflective materials are proposed. Uh, no natural vegetation or mature, mature trees are proposed for removal. And all development is to, uh, propose to occur above the rim rock. Uh, all storm waters proposed remain on site and all selected exterior lighting fixtures are to be dark, dark sky compliant per City of Ben codes. And we hope that the commission will look favorably on our submittal for the waterway overlay zone. That's the end of my speech and I kind of need some help from Alexa.
Have the, if you want me to pull anything else up.
Um, there was that aerial photo that was in the narrative with the blue line drawn.
And that was discussed in the staff report as well, that roof line from the subject site to neighboring properties and how they're in alignment. Let me pull up the narrative here.
Yeah, sometimes the images get a little bit
long.
A little hard to read.
Can you say that one more time? Did you say that the roof lines are aligned with the neighboring properties? So like the the distance is parallel basically to the river.
But the river moves.
Yes. The natural cove and peninsula are working again.
You just dig a little.
Okay.
It quickly becomes unreadable if I try to expand it. Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's the right one.
Yeah. And so this line is also depicted on our site plan. Um, if you dig into other aerial maps, you can see that the riverbank sticks out farther on the neighboring properties. But the code is not shown in this picture and it's impossible without taking the trees out.
Please don't do that.
But the survey shows the contour change and the, the, you know, cove, it's not very detailed, but, uh, the ordinary high watermark is, you know, like thirty feet or so past the riverbank in certain areas at certain water levels.
But the only thing that's extending beyond that blue line is just the patio, a covered patio, right? Or what's proposed?
Yeah.
The site plan has this blue line depicted.
Yeah, I'm looking at it. While she's looking that up, can I ask my question about the?
Yeah.
About the path? Is there a user trail through the property? No, because of the.
It's so extreme. Yeah.
Okay.
That looks pretty natural. Water, natural landscape along the river right there.
Yeah, it's really steep rim rock and it wouldn't be feasible to do anything below that anyway, because it's dangerous. So the, the line that I'm describing is just to the left of the highlighted ordinary high watermark. That's the corner of that.
Oh, true. Lines. This dotted line here. Blue line referenced in narrative, my connecting neighboring roof lines.
Yeah, lines up, faces right there.
Yeah, we're trying to be respectful to neighbors.
Appreciate.
Any other questions for the applicant? None for me.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Uh, so we've got one slip for, uh, public testimony. And so we can sorry, I'm trying to. Okay, so, um, you can hear from, uh, John Jordan.
Wait, that's who we just.
Oh, so sorry. Hello. All right, and then we have one person online. If, uh, Chad, if you want to raise your hand to speak. All right. Let's get his hand raised.
Was there anyone else in the room who wanted to speak who didn't fill out a slip? I think they, yeah. You do.
Oh, yeah.
Would you like coming up to the table and then we can now be fill out a slip afterwards? Just please state your name.
Hi. Uh, my name is Douglas Bielkini. I own the two properties to the north that are right there. Um, I know this property inside out. Uh, and upside down, there is a path. And it is real craggly, but that's how the, uh, I can tell you straight off, that's how the, um, fire department has gotten down to put out two huge fires in front of my house in the last couple of years. I've been there for over twenty-one years. There's a reason why this is the last non-built property on the river. And it's all because of the way it's built. My, my house, the one at two zero five three, which is the fence that you can see in the picture was, uh, part of McGill's Landing. It was done, uh, um, in the seventies. And that fence and that wall was what separated us from all of Bend, all the way down. There were no buildings, all the way to First Street Rapids. So I've seen the whole forest be taken, which, you know, did some good, but I've seen some bad too. Um, what I'm here to speak about is that my property is the highest property on, on the whole river in that area. All the wind goes all that way. It's, it's the highest property. Then you've got the depression where they've just purchased this house. And of course, I, I want everybody to have everything they want in a home, uh, and, and to be able to do the most you can. However, the laws is there for several reasons and I've, I've dealt with it over the years. Uh, but they're asking to go for two things that I have problems with that I, I don't know how to say it other than to just, um, explain it to you all. Imagine if you had the higher property, you have the view, it's better, it's desired, it's, it's, it's up here. Now you have another property, it's in a depression. It's, it's, you know, not as, not as buildable, not as friendly. As a matter of fact, you can stand out, you can't see the river from it. So they would have to pump up the ground, um, which the last gentleman, the reason why that fence is bare is there were, the gentleman who lives right to the north there who sold this property, just sold this property, he cut down, um, eleven sugar pine trees that were over a hundred years old, eleven. I, it was, uh, sickening to my stomach. It changed our ecosystem. Now, that doesn't matter for this guy. This is a new guy who's coming in. He bought the property from them. He wants to build. But the reason why that wa- wall was there and then you had these trees, boom, 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 built up for a windbreak right there. They got rid of the windbreak. So, uh, you've got a guy that now comes into this and he says, hey, I've got a peninsula. We all have peninsulas. I own two properties and it goes like this along the cliff. No, you don't have, it's a hundred foot, a hundred foot back. And so sometimes you have thirty feet and sometimes you have fifteen feet. It goes like this. Unfortunately for him, yes, it does go, it's, it's more of a peninsula. It's always been there. They've known this. The only way that they can make it better is to go up and to go out. So they want to go into the, the walls. It's up to you all. I, I know that. And I just want to throw out my thing. Imagine if you've had the view and now someone wants to build up and further out than they should be allowed. Then all the other people have been allowed, which is the whole reason that laws is there. From what I understand, uh, and dealing with it through the years. So I guess I, I would, I would be for, even though it's a covered area and then they want to put something else out there, they have the right, of course, to use that river, uh, the river area. It's amazing. And and so I'll let this fall on your all's, um, minds to, to decide uh, what you want to do, but it was a bit ready-built lot that now they want to pump up the, the gentleman before he cut the trees down. It was a bit ready-built lot that now they want to pump up, the, the gentleman before he cut the trees down. And then uh, in one night, it was, it was horrible. Um, because he knew that I, I, I had a problem with it. Uh, but what's done is done. So then he, he levels all that out and then he adds two feet, so this wall that was up here isn't so up anymore. They filled it in and now it's even, now, but now I think the next, and I'm not sure how they're going to do it. But I think that the next guy's, uh, this gentleman is gonna, he's gonna want to raise the. The literally add two more, three more feet to the properties to make them even, I don't know how you do that. But I know that that would be uh, probably what he, what he's wanting to do and then he wants to be, be more in the walls. Um, but so all I can say is the properties to the right there that have been the same and untouched for over twenty years. In my hands. To have someone build up and then forward. Uh, you know, that, that devalues my property. If it was, if everything else, it looks beautiful what he's doing, I'm actually quite envious, it's, it, it looks wonderful. Um, but not to the cost of my view, my river view that's always been there. And some of you might say, well, why didn't you buy the property? I tried. There was a neighbor that didn't want to sell to me, it happens, and he's the same guy that, that sold to them. And, and so, and he's the guy that cut the trees down, which is why he doesn't like me, but if you saw these majestic trees. You would have understood, they would live for four hundred and fifty years and he cut them down at a hun-. Um, so it's just seeing that big being raised up. Number one, and seeing it being pushed into the walls is obviously not something that I w- want. But I don't know if that's fair, you all need to decide what's fair and what's right there. I, of course, I'm going to say, hey, don't do that, and if I was him, I'd be saying, hey, let me do that. So um, so it's up to you all, I just thought that this might be the time to come in and. And put in my thoughts that, well, if it's devaluing my property and raising hi-. You know, his property, it's not really raising everybody's properties. So, you know, maybe we can pull it back a little bit and maybe he doesn't have to raise it up as much. And that would be great for me, sorry to waste your time, I'm sorry I talked a little too much, I'm a little nervous. So, thank you for your time, is that? Is that it? Or do, or any questions? From, from you all, please.
Have you talked with the, your neighbors that want to build?
No, I've never met them, they're from out of town, I, I found out about it through this. They had a secret selling, because the guy, I always told him, I, I said, second you want to sell, I'll give you twenty-five grand over anybody else's asking price. To keep it the same. And he said to me, well, we don't want to do that, we want somebody that comes in and builds because it'll raise our property values. So what you're saying to me is building another house will raise your property value on the river instead of having, you know, a, a lot there. And he said, well, that's what I think, so, uh, you know, it's his right to sell to whom he wants. And, and they have the right to do what they want with it, but asking for. You know, to be pushed forward, that makes everybody. The, I don't know what the blue line was, I could see how the two, they, they matched the two um. The house, it's way over here in my house and it looks like it's all even. Um, and maybe it is, but it doesn't look like it, it actually looks when you're standing at my property like I'm back. And other people are forward, as a matter of fact, when I go to all my neighbors' homes that are on the river. They can stand in their house and see the, like, the whole river, I can't see that. Just the lay of the land and, and, and how close it is, so there are pluses and minuses. That go with each little territory of that property. But I think that um, it would be worth my time today to come in to speak to you all to just say, you know, it's, it's nothing against new growth. Life happens and, and although there's never ever been anything there, that was my good fortune. Uh, and these people have the right to have their good fortune and, and live in Bend um, and have a great home. I just want to keep all things on the river part even, that's what I would like, there's, in other words, enforce the wa- walls rules. And don't allow them to fill anymore, which is literally changing the. The, the fill to raise it too high, I'm sorry, I'm being long-winded, you guys have things to do, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you Douglas.
Yes, sir, I will, I appreciate it, y'all, thank you.
Vice Chair, I got a question back for the petitioner. To clarify something.
Do you have a question? There's a rebuttal session after.
Yeah, so let's uh, let's see, I think um. Someone have their hand up?
Yeah.
Yeah. Chad, you are, unmute yourself, there you go.
There we go, thank you guys so much for the opportunity to speak, I really appreciate it. Um, you know, hearing Douglas's concerns, certainly I would love to meet you Douglas. Um, we stopped by your place, we were in town last and you were not available or not there, but um. Certainly do appreciate your comments and um. Distinguished folks of the uh, Ben Building Department, we are absolutely abiding by. Sightlines and doing everything as absolutely respectful as possible. And I know John is there and could explain any of the. Intricacies that, that Douglas brought up, because they truly are not, not what's happening. In terms of what we're building. And um, I hope you guys can um. Take a look at this objectively and we really, really appreciate it and certainly hope that this. Goes our way, so thank you guys very much.
Uh, thank you Chad.
Thank you, uh. Chair Winters, Vice Chair Winters, I just want to clarify that Chad who just spoke is the property owner, just to clarify the perspective.
Okay, and if there's uh, nobody else willing or wanting to. Uh, get public comment, we can move on to the applicant's rebuttal, so if the applicant wanted to come forward and. Discuss anything?
I understand it's not great to cut down trees and stuff, but that was nothing that this party is guilty of. And I would also like to address the, the, the grading issue, because right now the site is depressed. However, building code states that you must maintain your stormwater on your own site and right now. If you have an elevated site of two or three feet higher than. Uh, each, on each side of this property, all their stormwater is going to run off under this property. And so it's not Chad and Sunny's responsibility to maintain the stormwater from the neighboring sites. That's on the, the owner of those properties. So right now, this site has to be brought up if we're going to build on it, otherwise it's just going to be a collection point. Building code.
It's also a planning.
So, to be clear then, you're basically making it level with the other?
We're trying to match, we're trying to match grades on each.
And, and my, my question was, is that grade with the straight, are you coming in straight in the, in the driveway or dripping down, dipping down still or going up or?
We're coming down actually just a little bit and trying to maintain sloping away from the garage door so we don't get flooding.
Yes, I see too much of that in the city.
In the apron and sidewalk.
Can bring them up, right.
Apron sidewalk are already constructed, so we're using the existing grades from those.
Addressing the issue of the view, was I, when I'm looking at the plan, it looks like if the. The actual building is actually. A little bit inward from where the other houses are, it's just this, this. It's a, it's a covered patio, it's not a deck, it's a covered patio.
It's a hard surface, it's like pavers built up with retaining walls and fill.
Well, yeah, so like that, that's the patio and then, and then there's a cover on the patio, I said the cover that would be blocking the neighbor's view, but if I'm looking at the. Plan, it doesn't look to me like it sticks out enough that it would be able to block the neighbor's view.
It's a partial cover too, it doesn't cover the whole patio. It's kind of more of a protective uh, cover for the uh, you know, keep the weather away from the door.
So yeah, the blue line was roof line to the property to the north, roof line to the property to the south, you draw a straight line and it hits the edge of the roof line. Of the covered patio, patio itself goes out a little bit further.
But the roof line doesn't, the roof line doesn't stick out.
Part of it, yes, it's, it's, that's what that blue line is.
Alright, thank you.
The, the raised patio is maybe two feet higher than the natural grade in that. Uh, can you speak to the assertion that there actually is a river access on the property? I looked at going down and I was afraid, so I didn't go down, if you're a firefighter, go for it, but I am not a firefighter. I couldn't see any uh. Developed trail access and it would have been a scramble, it was. Dangerous, it would be a coin of salt if you lost your footing.
Okay.
And I, I'll offer just looking at, this is Ian Lighthazard from the city attorney's office, just looking at the. Dial, the Deschutes County Property Information Map, it looks like there is legal access through an easement. From Lakeside Place down to this BPRD natural area along the water, maybe six, seven houses north of the subject site. So I don't know if it's feasible to use that to get down, but it looks like there is um, an easement showing up on the map that provides. Technical access, if not practical access, I don't know.
Not on this property though.
Correct, but. Six, seven properties to the north, about a block north.
It looks like it's like a. Twenty-foot swath or something like that, oh, and then it gets a little deeper, just, or. Yeah, just on the other side of this property.
I have no further questions.
Anybody else? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so now we're going to close the public hearing. Um, I guess, is there any further comments from staff? Okay, so we'll move on to deliberation. Who wants to go first?
Uh, I think it's, meaning the letter of the law, the planning department went through everything and checked off the boxes, make sure we're covered. I think the only question is the five feet in the hundred-foot zone. And I really don't see so many of these setbacks, especially with a craggy river edge, as being perfectly. Easy to find where is the hundred foot. Um, I, I don't have a problem with it, I think the house is going to fill the space up, there will be views blocked no matter what. And it's the classic story of somebody buys next to a vacant lot or a farm and then all of a sudden there's a building on it. Uh, if it was a park and they were told there was no, no building ever coming, that's a different story. So I don't have a problem with the five-foot encroachment, it's kind of like the flexible line. Uh, my only question would be is if staff said everybody's coming in a hundred or there's been a, a three here, five here, two here to over the time when we were reviewing the. Was projects, I don't know if you've got any institutional knowledge of that.
Sorry, if you are going to respond, we just come to the table so we make sure we get you um. I can speak to the. Several was applications that we've had in the last couple of years, we usually have a few each year um. This is probably one of, if not the only one in recent history in the stretch of the river. Most of the others have been down in the southern part of the river, um, closer to Drake Park and Miller's Landing. Um, those have historically been approved um, anywhere from forty to fifty feet from the ordinary high watermark. Um, this again, each stretch of the river has a different setback. Established in the code, um, this still has the same language that the planning commission can approve. A setback of anything from forty to a hundred feet.
So I think we're on that, just flexibility on that edge, so we can get it. Done right and we're still covered on the slope protection and all that.
Right. And the building itself isn't in that, it's just a paver patio, which. I mean, if you looked at the river setback all along the river closer, further to the south, it's a lot closer than that.
I'm sorry, Chair, did I miss, did you officially close the public hearing? Did you, okay.
We're in deliberation.
Could be rhetorical questions, but conversation among the commission.
I think that this is a pretty cut and dry. Hearing here, I, I think that we've, all the boxes like you mentioned have been checked. I think that, like, the fact that the. The roof line is aligned with both of the neighborhood, neighbor properties, I think that. The exemption matches like the spirit of. What this is about, so. Yeah, my biggest thing is precedent setting, and so, okay, if you're going to allow it, then. Kind of what, why, and, and I think that they, there's a good argument there for. The existing roof lines, um, because yeah, the river, it's not like. It doesn't seem like it's taking advantage of a lot of, you know, like a, just a slight little kind of cook in the river that might kick that. High watermark back, I mean, I think it just, it, it seems to make sense. And I don't feel like it affects, you know, sets a, a.
They're not building off of the cliff down into the.
Yeah.
Well, and, and the, the whole philosophy of the was, I mean, we have basics of zoning covered. Building and design covered and then the was gives the extra eyes for staff, especially to get down in there and see what we have to protect and. I think with all the different lo- levels we have there, I think it's being protected and, and it's being uniformed, so. I'm there.
I, I feel like if the, the roof lines are matching or, or even. That seems pretty uniform to me, it doesn't seem like it's really affecting um, the actual river. Repairing zones, public access, anything like that, um. Yeah, I, I don't really have a big issue with this one, it doesn't, it seems to be just be more of a feature of that. The contours of the property.
And it's very well articulated. Bob, you have anything to add to deliberation?
Uh, I'm supportive, if they'd asked for ten or fifty feet, I'd say no, but I think five feet is a, as I said. In line with the other roof line seems perfectly reasonable and fair.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
Uh, I don't have a pick of the sun, you know, make the motion if you want.
I don't think I have it either, when you have it. Okay, uh, I'll move the, to approve the waterway overlay zone application. PLWZ two oh two four oh seven oh nine for a new. Single unit detached dwelling at two zero four nine Northwest Lakeside Place. Based on the findings provided by staff and the recommended conditions minus condition number five, which has already been met.
Second?
Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, Bob?
Aye.
Awesome. Okay, uh, it passes. Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to agenda item number three, approval of minutes, the December ninth, twenty twenty-four minutes.
I'm not sure if you approve the minutes.
We don't have to.
We don't have to anymore, we just, if.
Say if you have any problem.
Yeah, if anyone saw any errors or omissions, speak now or forever hold your peace. There none, okay. Uh, now we'll move on to communications, reports from planning commissioners. Anyone have any from report?
I'd like to apologize for, I think I mentioned earlier, but I missed last meeting, didn't. Uh, report that, I was, I had to, sorry about that.
Standard pink belly procedure will.
Thank you for not coming and sharing.
I'm only sorry that I didn't tell you before.
You didn't schedule your illness.
Alright, uh, Bob, anything from you?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, uh, we'll move on to planning manager, alright.
Thank you, just two brief things, so we will be canceling your next meeting February twenty-fourth. Uh, we don't have any agenda items lined up. For that meeting, um, but I think as I mentioned before, March will be quite busy and possibly April, so we will definitely keep you. Busy on those meeting dates with a couple of items on each agenda, I believe. Um, and then this next Wednesday at City Council will be the uh, public hearing for the Ponderosa Master Plan. And Conference of Plant Text Amendment that you saw a few weeks ago. Um, so that'll be considered by the council.
This.
In just over a week, on the nineteenth, February nineteenth and. Be Margot.
It's not me, I'm gonna be.
And that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, alright, uh. Tom?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Ian?
Likewise, nothing.
All righty.
Yeah, second.